We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Nieper, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Emily Father, Creator of all, lead us to see the light and instruct us that we may be able to reason; guard us against spectacular endeavors that we may be genuine. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. Teppin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to remove Mike Chartrand from privilege of the floor and to add Neighborhood Concerns and Safety Services Committee reports under Committee Reports and to move Resolution 113 to appear after the public hearing.
Second.
Room Zach, reports of official.
Oh, yes, and Mr. Brochus to be added under Reports of Officials.
No, not to be added, it is moved to add on the public hearing after the resolution.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn, second.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to delete Mike Chartrand under privilege of the floor, move Resolution 113 and Reports of Officials to the beginning of the meeting after the public hearing, and to add the Neighborhood Concerns and Safety Services Committee reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We have a scheduled public hearing regarding a rezoning petition for 461 South Dana. I'll have the clerk give the official call.
Notice is hereby given that on the 28th day of January 2013 at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers located at 50 Town Square, Lima, Ohio, a public hearing will be held on the following matter: to modify the applicable city zoning code for a parcel located at 461 South Dana Avenue from residential Class 1 to business Class 1 within the city of Lima, Allen County, Ohio. Petition is filed in preparation for O'Reilly Automotive to purchase and build a retail store. This petition is initiated by Gary Kramer and has been endorsed by the City Planning Commission. Any interested person or persons desiring to be heard on said matter may do so at the time and place here and specified. The reports, maps, and other documents pertaining to the above request are on file in the office of the Clerk of Council and are open to public inspection.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the issue of the rezoning at 461 South Dana? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. For the second time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of rezoning at 461 South Dana? For the third and final time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of rezoning at 461 South Dana? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And next, we have Resolution 113.
Memorializing the late Richard R. Hartzog, outstanding Lima citizen, and extending condolences to his family on behalf of the Lima City Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that Resolution Number 0113 be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, and the second, is to adopt Resolution 113 on its first reading. I will ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Whereas on December 17, 2012, the entire Lima land community was saddened by the death of Richard R. Hartzog, whose many contributions have and will continue to affect the Lima land community. And whereas, after 32 years of service, in 1991, Richard retired from the City of Lima Utilities Body Department. Upon retirement, he worked part-time as a doorman at the Fraternal Order of Eagles, Aerie 370, where he was a member. And whereas, Richard Hartzog was an Army veteran of the Korean War and was a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars post-1275, Fraternal Order of the Orioles Nest 173, and American Legion post-96, where he loved being with his buddies and participating in the Friday Fish Fry. And whereas, his dedication to the Lima community was evident by his involvement and the work he did with the Eastside Neighborhood Association. And whereas, it is the opinion of this council that the many contributions of Richard R. Hartzog should not go unrecognized, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Lima, Ohio, that the Lima City Council hereby acknowledges the many contributions of Richard R. Hartzog, which have and will continue to benefit our citizens, and that the council, on behalf of the entire community, expresses its condolences to his family and friends.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
At this time, I wouldn't want to express something to the family. Dick would always come to the meetings. He'd bring a smile. He always had a question for me. And even when he was being serious, he still would put a smile on your face, and that's what I appreciated. And he always encouraged me to press forth and to do what's right and stand firm on what's right and what you believe in. And I appreciated that. There was many nights when you kind of wanted to throw in the towel a little bit, but he always encouraged you to do better. And I appreciated that coming from him. And his wife would be there by his side, too, for the events that she could attend. And he was just a good man. I only got to know him for a short period of time. We do have some individuals that he worked for in the city, and I asked them if they would, Mr. Capraro or Mr. Seeley, if they would have any words that they would like to say about Mr. Richard.
Seems I'm the briefer of the two before you get in there.
You know, Dick was a great employee. I mean, I've known Dick. You've known him for a short time. I've probably known Dick for 35, 40 years. But he was not only a good employee for the city, and do whatever, and he did whatever he needed to do, but he was a good person, just like you stated. I mean, Dick used to play cards with Dick once in a while. We golfed once in a while. Dick used to, him and his supervisor at the time, Harry Rex, another great guy, they used to go out in the spring. I can always remember, they'd go out and pick strawberries and they'd bring, you probably remember that? My wife remembers it real well, because they'd bring a big basket of strawberries. I didn't eat them much. I never got to them, but Dick was just a good person, so.
He was.
He was, yep. And a friend, so, you know, it was a good honor to see him honor, you know, Richard. But his name's Dick. You know, it's Richard, but he's Dick to everybody, so.
And I would also thank you, Mr. Capraro. On behalf of Eastside Neighborhood Association, we will be presenting something to the family on behalf of us, and we appreciate your membership, and we pray that you continue to work with us at Eastside Neighborhood Association. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll or take the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Resolution 113 has been adopted on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. I'll invite Mrs. Hartzog to come forward. I'll present you the resolution.
All I want to say is thank you, guys. It will be appreciated.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Reports of Officials. Mr. Zach Brochus, Charter Review Committee.
Mr. President, members of council, administration, it is with great honor that I stand here tonight to remind you guys that on your agenda this evening, Ordinance Number 02713 is the culmination of the work that we've done as a Charter Review Commission. If I remember right, going back through my notes, we started this process in July, early August of 2008. And during that time, reviewed, by my estimation, between 75 and 80 sections of the charter were changed or amended in some way, a handful of them repealed or removed. And this will make the sixth time we've approached the voters of the city of Lima, asking for the changes that will make your guys' job here at the city much easier, but protect them and afford them with the benefits that the charter intends. I just want to say thank you for the support that I've received from, and the commissions received from the administration, from council, from the various departments. Certainly, Mr. Geiger's tireless efforts with the drafting of the language that needed to be done, and Sally's work at our various meetings. I asked her the other day, she had no idea of how many meetings we had, and we both lost count. Somewhere along the line, I lost some email attachments, and she had some stuff filed, but my guess is it was close to 100 meetings. And many more hours of deliberation on our own as members of the commission. I also want to say, just real quick, to the members of the Charter Review Commission, Nancy Burney, Ben Rose, John Doxy, John Leahy Jr., and Dick Meredith, that I certainly appreciate the support they've given to this process over the last five years. There were a few others that came and went along the way, and we appreciate their support as well. Any questions for me? I think we've thoroughly covered everything the other night, but.
Just a comment. I will be issuing a letter to all of you, just banding this Charter Review Commission. I want to thank you very much. This has probably, as you've stated, been the most thorough review and comprehensive review of the charter, probably since its inception. And as you stated, it took many, many hours on the part of all the volunteers on the commission to do that. And I, it's a volunteer commission. You all knew that when you embarked on that request from me. But I would like, Tony, I don't know if I have to have legislation or not, but I will authorize whatever we need to do. I would like to have a plaque created and put in council chambers with the names of the Charter Review Commission members. It has been just a tantamount project, and I want to thank you and all of the members who have given all of their time to this entire review. I think that you're right, we do have provided all the charter changes, if the ordinance passes this evening and is approved by the voters, does bring the charter into the 20th century. It does address the various changes that have taken place over time for the way that the city should conduct its business, and as you aptly stated, protects the residents and the taxpayers of Lima at the same level that they were protected before. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Item B of this consent calendar be received and filed, and that Item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is that Item B be received and filed, and that Item A be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number One.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation for additional engineering services with URS Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number One be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number One to authorize any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Two.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation to enter into a contract with ASDAQ Systems.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Two be amended to reflect some different account numbers in the second paragraph.
Which are?
Which are 202-6110-55041, and the second one is 203-7110-55041. They're software maintenance accounts.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to amend the communication as stated by Counselor McLean. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Two be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation as amended.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Two and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Three.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation for the purchase of exercise equipment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Three receive and file, refer to the Safety Service Committee.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Three and refer to Council Safety Services Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to amend the strength ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Four receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Five.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Five be received and filed, legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Six.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding new permit for Pappy's at 1,000 West North Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Six and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Seven.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding new permit to the Ohio Theater at 122 West North Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Seven and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Eight.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to submit an application for an Ohio EPA liquor collection and prevention grant.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Nine.
From the City Engineer requesting legislation to place sidewalk assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Ten.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with DLC Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication Number Ten be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Eleven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to submit a letter of interest to ODOT for a bike lane on North Main and South Main Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication Number Eleven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Eleven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Twelve.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to amend the contract with Hume Supply, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication Number Twelve be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Twelve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Thirteen.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to disperse funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Thirteen receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Thirteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Fourteen.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to amend the codified ordinances.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Fourteen receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Fourteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Reports of Committee's Neighborhood Concerns. Mr. Lo.
Thank you, Mr. President. All the councilors have received a copy of the report, and they've had time to read over it, and I would like to make a motion that the report for the Neighborhood Concerns Committee be received and filed and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve. The committee report is submitted by Counselor Lo. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Safety Services Committee, Mr. Glenn.
Same, all the city council received my report, and I want to thank Ms. Adams for putting a lot of work in this, though this was continued from last year on our parking for handicap. But I want to make a motion, I receive and file, I can make a motion for us to receive, I'd like to receive and file and approve this report.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve. The committee report is submitted by Counselor Glenn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 1213.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 01213 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 1213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 1213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 1313.
Loving special assessments for the 2012 combined sidewalk project for construction of certain described sidewalks in accordance with Resolution Number 1511 adopted September the 26, 2011.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 1313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 1313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 1313 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 1413.
Amending the city zoning code from residential Class 1 to business Class 1 for a parcel located at 461 South Dana Avenue in the city of Lima as herein described.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 01413 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 1413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I attended the meetings that were held on this subject. In fact, I had to come back a second time with some rezoning issues resolved, and I just would like to note that the planning commission asked some very hard questions and are concerned with the residential property around that, and I think with this, they have addressed that. And having seen no residential public there at the meetings as well as tonight at the public hearing, I assume that they are in favor of this, so I will be supporting it as it's in my ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Lo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I spoke with Ms. Adams directly before we came out, and just like she said, no one came to the public hearing. I guess my concern when I first read this was the safety of individuals that will be turning into this business. That intersection is highly drived. It's a lot of traffic through that area. I guess in these meetings I didn't get to attend, but I think the safety issue of where they're about to place it was my only concern. I'm only going to support this because Ms. Adams is supporting it for a ward. That's a dangerous intersection, and I just pray that whatever they do, likewise, signage-wise, that they get it right, because it's going to be hard turning in and out of that business. I just don't want to see 10 years down the line, because it was difficult to get in there, that we have another vacant building in the city of Lima. And I guess that's my biggest concern. But I will go ahead and support it tonight because of Ms. Adams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I have a couple things to say, because this is a very, very important meeting, when you get to hear about, hear about different things coming in your neighborhood. And a lot of folks would say, I didn't know anything about it, you know, and you've got a new business coming in there, and you have your concerns, you have opportunity to come to city council, you have opportunity to come to the meeting, and then you, when it's passed and when it gets built, then all the concerns start coming. But we ask folks all the time, and some folks sit there and watch it on TV and say, well, I would have came, I had different things to do, but take initiative, take care of your neighborhood. That's what councils get paid for to do. If you have anything to say, let them know. Like, I'm supporting it, because we don't have no one say anything about it, but you can hear people rumble in the back, say something about it. But you had the concerns, you had to went to the council, or you kind of came out here and presented what you had to say about it, but you're not here tonight. And as Jesse said, it is something dangerous there, and a lot of people come with concerns once it's been there and all that. And I learned that from supporting different things, and then I said, no, I will research a little bit more now and let the folks know about it. But you can't let everyone know about it. You've got to take your own hands and take care of business, and come out and speak out if you don't like it. Don't wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 1513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 1613.
Amending Ordinance 7612.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 1613 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 1513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 1513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 1613.
Amending Ordinance 7612.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 1613 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 1613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Elstro, is this new work outside the original scope or work that just overran the original bid?
Mr. Elstro.
Mr. President. If you would just bear with me just a half a minute. This, what you have before you is the Hume contract, which was for the Elm Street Reconstruction Project totaling almost 1.5 million, and what we're asking for is to authorize the payment of another $19,733 to pay Hume Supply, who was the contractor. to pay Hume Supply, who was the contractor, for additional work which we authorized. Specifically, there was a bit of drainage work that was required at Cable and Elm. Once we got out to see the field conditions, we knew that the adjustment from the field observations would make for a better job and drain appropriately. The balance of it was for geotextile fabric, and that too was unforeseen conditions that were not, could not be detected until such time. We did total excavation of the roadway surface and the base. And we found that there were certain sections of the subsoil that were insufficient and required this geotextile fabric to be laid down so that the permanent roadway could serve the necessary loads that were projected on the street.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Lo.
Mr. Elstro, if I could real quick. I guess one of the things that I've seen since I've been on council, I could understand maybe 5,000, maybe $10,000 difference in bids. But it seems like the same companies always come back and hit us for 20,000, 25,000 extra. If we're giving them this extra money, are they truly the lowest bidder? Is there anything that we could tighten up the reins where they would kind of come into a closer round? I mean, have they asked for the additional and it went over the lowest bid?
Mr. President.
Mr. Elstro.
Not only are they the lowest bidder, you need to understand that these were conditions that were unseen by our engineers and our designers. And you also need to be aware that on a project of this size, 1.5 million, and merely to come in $19,000 over really is remarkable and a tribute to the quality of engineers that we have on staff. I would suggest that you take a look at any other city or any other engineering project outside the scope of what we do and begin to look at the overages that those customers pay. It's not uncommon to have a 20% or more contingency and still have overruns. So this is a very minute request in relationship to the $1.5 million project that we had out there. Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. For the record, that is actually under a 2% overrun. Ordinance 1613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 1713.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract to sell scrap, iron, steel, copper, and brass.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 1713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 1713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 1713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 1813.
Amending Ordinance 11112.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 1813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 1813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 1813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 1913.
Amending Ordinance 8512.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance, or excuse me, I move that Ordinance 1913 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 1913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 1913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2013.
Authorizing the mayor to submit a letter of interest to the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 2013 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 2013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 2013 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2113.
Establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Ordinance 2113 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 2113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 2113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2213.
Authorizing payments from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund for police K-9 and related services and equipment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 2213 pass on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 2213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 2213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2313.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, receive, administer, and expend funds through the Ohio EPA Litter Collection and Prevention Grant.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 2313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 2313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
If possible, I'd like to ask Ms. Odom if she could expand on this a little bit, please, and when we feel that the EPA will award the grant if we qualify.
Mr. President, council members, this grant is a grant that actually used to come from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and has been moved to the Ohio EPA. Formerly, Keep Ohio, excuse me, Keep Allen County Beautiful was recipient of funds through this grant program. The city of Lima has been invited to partner with, many of the partners which are listed in the letter, which include the Ohio Auto River Coalition, Johnny Appleseed's Park District, Keep Allen County Beautiful, Downtown Lima, Lacknep, and the Northwest, excuse me, North Central Ohio Solid Waste District for a larger grant. This grant does not cover administrative costs, does not cover personnel costs. You cannot hire people to pick up litter. But what this will do is bring back the very successful Plant Pride Not Litter campaign that we had run several years ago, allowing us to increase information about recycling and litter awareness and to supply equipment for volunteer efforts to clean up parks and public lands. Both Johnny Appleseed Parks and the City of Lima Summer Rec Program will be working directly with children in those programs and using some of these dollars as well. The money will, the grant has to be in on February 1. We will not hear probably until May as to whether we do have been awarded the funds. The funds, if they are granted, will come in July, and it's a one-year program. So it will not be available for us in early summer, but can be used throughout the year after that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I have just one question there. That $4,000 matching, we would have to do the matching or everybody involved would match up that?
No, thank you for that. I'm making that point, Mr. Glenn. That's a very generous donation. This grant did require a matching, a local matching grant. And the North Central Ohio Solid Waste District is providing that match for us for this grant. So it's a wonderful partnership, and we want to thank Dennis Baker and all his folks for that match.
I agree. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 2313 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2413.
Amending Section 840.07 of codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 2413 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 2413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 2413 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2513.
Amending Section 840.09 of codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 2513 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 2513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 2513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2613.
Amending Section 840.12 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 26-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 2613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 2613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2713.
Authorizing and directing the submission of proposed charter amendments to the electors of the city of Lima, Ohio at the May 7, 2013 primary election to amend or delete various city charter sections as set forth herein.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 2713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion and the second is to pass Ordinance 2713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I know Mr. Brush is sitting here, but you know, they did work very tirelessly and very hard at these changes throughout our charter. And there was many meetings that the council people were there and listened to the changes and shook their heads a couple times because they had some conversations that were very dry and some were very funny. But those guys did a great job, and I'd like to thank them in more open ban. I appreciate your getting them a plaque because I think they deserve that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I'd like to say the same thing there, but I'm happy for him. I'm glad you thought about putting the plaque up for him because this is well overdue, getting this charter changed and it done. Like I said before, I know that's one of your campaign moves, that you wanted that done. And I was excited because a lot of things come up that have been outdated. And they spent a lot of time here. I know they went through a lot of committee people and for him and Mr. Rose and all, continued going with all the distractions going on. But I appreciate what they've done and and I feel that our peoples and people go out and vote, they would have a good charter review there, and I think we did an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.[1447.18]
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance twenty-seven thirteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. This is only his business. Mr. Nefer?
Just one comment this evening. Going back to the Hume Supply contract and the overage, certainly, you know, it was a very small percentage as an overage, and I did not have a problem with that. However, one issue that that project specifically I did have a problem with, and I will bring this up again as we go through our projects for 2013 in the Public Works Committee shortly, is timeframe. That, you know, it seems silly to me that we have to pay for every overage they have, but they have no financial skin in the game to finish these projects at the timeline with which they suggested. Obviously, if there was only a nineteen, a one percent change in terms of change orders, we'll say, to the scope, the original bid scope of that project, it should not have been as long overdue in actually being finished as it was. So I don't know if there's financial incentives we can place in our bids, but it's something we certainly need to explore. It was a major intersection. It didn't help that we were doing other north-south roadways as well during the same time period, but it was very inconvenient to the folks that lived there, to the folks that used Elm Street to get from one side of the city to the other. It should have been done on time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nefer. Mr. McLean?
Just one item this evening. I'd like to extend some gratitude to our law director for his hard and tirelessly working on that claim settlement that we received. Found money for the city's water department that goes back about seven or eight years. We were sixty-eight out of like eleven hundred claimants. So I think you did a very good job, even though Mike tried to hold you back a little bit. You're doing a great job, and I appreciate that and the tireless work that you did on the charter.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Low?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that the Eastside Neighborhood Association will meet February the twelfth at 7:00 P.M. at Forest Park Church on three fifteen Collins Avenue. And I would also like to make a motion to refer to the Public Works Committee additional payments being made to contractors for extra work above and beyond contract.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer to the Public Works Committee project overruns. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer? I think it's already been reviewed, like within the last two years.
Still in the committee? Well, I'll rescind my motion and suggest that we do something quickly, get some answers. I would just like to know for myself.
We held it in response to the citywide purchasing policy. That's where, that's where we left it, is the larger insurance system would be part of the citywide purchasing policy.
I can also remember, Mr. Low, if I may, I can also remember not that long ago there was, I guess, a policy in place that if there was going to be an overrun, a lot of times these unexpected things come up in the middle of a project, and you can't wait two weeks for a council meeting, to have it referred to the committee for the committee to meet. And generally, the chairman of the committee was to be notified if a project, I think, went over ten percent over. Yes. Okay? So, I mean, I'm just saying, as part of that whole conversation that was in there.
That policy was never approved even by the Public Works Committee, the local councils as a whole.
Absolutely.
Which is an issue of contention I had with the standard operating procedure as it's been set by Chairman Potts.
Right. I'm just saying, I mean, that's where there had been discussion.
We did not refer to the citywide.
Mr. President, that is in the purchasing policy, and it's not the old one, it's a brand-new one. And everybody should have a copy of that. And it spells out when, when it needs to come to council, when they can do it beforehand, and then come to council. It's all spelled out in there, and I don't have that with me. If you're looking at, if you need a copy, let me know, and I'll get your copy.
Okay. Mr. President?
Why don't you send a copy, because that might just clear up a lot of things for all of us, okay? Mr. Low?
I'll meet with Mr. Howard.
Okay.
So I'll rescind that motion. I'll meet with you, Howard, as soon as possible. I got a lot of questions. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tevin?
Just a couple of things. While we're talking about West Elm Street, that was, and I'll say it again, what a nice improvement that has been for all the residents and the comments that I continue to receive from those that are benefiting from those changes. They're very, very appreciative. And I had spoken to Howard, but there is a concern with the amount of semi-traffic, semi-truck traffic going past Woodlawn, and it really has to do with the fact that we are now two-way traffic from I-75 all the way out to Easttown Road. Howard has assured me that we will be taking some counts when, when we, when the time is appropriate. We have the baseline data and see if there's other countermeasures we need to take to slow that down. The issue becomes, once you hit cable, Elm Street goes back to the narrower road, no curbed gutters and sidewalks, and it's not really designed for semi-traffic. So just for any of the residents that are listening, we do hear your concerns, and I will be glad to work with Mr. Elstro to take your concerns forward and hopefully drive them to resolution. Bob Friedman, I see you're here this evening. I know that one issue that has come up in the Neighborhood Association has been the house at the southeast corner of West Wayne and Nixon and the huge bush that's in the front yard that blocks the view of oncoming traffic from either street. Property owner who happens to be a bank has been notified, and they've been given until February the 11th to remove it, or the city will take action and do it themselves. So please pass that on, and I appreciate Howard and Chris Newmeyer's help with that. That is a safety concern. If you're in a, if you're in a big truck, you know, you're a big pickup truck and you sit up high in an SUV, you can see. But if you're in a, if you're in a vehicle, you're in a car like you drive, Bob, you can't see it. So please pass that on if I'm not at the next Neighborhood Association. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things this evening. First of all, February 2nd, this Saturday, Midway East is having their bake sale. I believe the hours are from 10:00 to like 2:00. And then February 21st, Midway East will be having their neighborhood meeting at 7:00 P.M. at the Center, 7:27 East Kivvy. It's on a Thursday. I would like to, and I will have a reminder, because this is in advance, but to the committee members that sit on the Economic Community Development Committee that I chair, I had referred last year in early November, I requested an update on the Whittier development. And I would like to call a meeting March 4th at 6:00 P.M. to meet at Whittier for the meeting, to get an update from the director of the development along with Amy Odom in attendance. So if you can put that on your calendar, I would appreciate it. We will meet out there. And that's everything I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes. I was going to set up a meeting March, February the 4th, too, but I'll change my.
March 4th.
March 4th. Oh, okay. February 4th, we will be having a safety service meeting, and we're going to use, we're going to do that at 5:00 o'clock. Both committee members okay with that date?
Yep.
Okay.
What, yeah.
It's on the safety service funding.
Oh, the communications.
Yep, communication. Also, I want to thank everyone for coming out to the Dr. Mark King. Bob was, received a great award from us, the Furwa Williams Award. I'd like to thank you, and I know you carry that the rest of your life. We love it. And Ms. Adams, thank you so much, too, for attending, and all the folks who came out and donated for that. We also will be doing my annual survey. I do it every year. I get around to all, everyone and ask them what they want, you know, what they want to see in the neighborhoods. And I get an opportunity to get around and see a lot of what need to be taken down. This year, I already put the streets in already that we're going to be on our wish list to be paved. I got them, and also will be sending Tony the letter of the sidewalks in the State Street area. Yes. I will be giving that addresses to you later tomorrow at 4:00. But we had a couple more to add on there. And a couple more things. We are working, we are working on putting together a team of folks together for winter time for, for sheltering snow. I know we're down to three people, so we're looking for more volunteers to help. The elderly people are out. I know I've been calling the same folks. Thank you guys so much for taking the calls, and I know my young kids, they're still getting paid for it, still in the rent a kid, but most of them saying they don't want to go out for an amount of money. But we asking for more volunteers, because we will be having more snow coming in. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer three issues, two of them to the H.R. Committee, one of which is reviewing reinstituting employee recognition programs for the employees of the city. And the second issue is regarding the pay rate for the Civil Service Secretary.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer to the Human Resources Committee, the, a review and reinstatement of the employee recognition program and also a review of the pay rate for the Civil Service Board Secretary.
Very good.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the motion carries.
And the third issue, I'd like to refer, I guess, to the neighborhood concerns. I meant to say something for them. But during the budget meeting, some, these are, once these issues came out, Mr. Geiger brought up the issue of feral cats and the, if there's an opportunity for the city to participate in some way with that problem. And I'd like to refer that topic to the neighborhood, neighborhood concern.
I could do that. I can make a motion right there.
Now, a second. She's making the motion to refer to your committee.